We're going to call a meeting to order. If you could please stand in the silence, please. We'll have a pledge of life.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Number four on our agenda is roll call. Mr. Story?
Here.
Ms. Burkhardt?
Here.
Mr. Timmons?
Here.
Mr. Burda?
Here.
And myself. Out of number five is approval minutes from the meeting of November thirteenth that is in your package that Charles passed out. Are there any questions or comments or anything, or do I have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Motion, Mr. Story, to have a second.
Second.
Second, Mr. Burda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Out of number six is to hear from our public comment if anyone would like to speak. Okay. Out of number seven, the reports from committees, members of the Board of Mayor and Alderman, the police chief department report.
Thank you. Being that this is, excuse me, I believe the first one we've done at least in a while in the end of December, I thought what I'd do tonight is just give you kind of a highlight of 2023. Like any other year, we've had a lot of good successes. We've had some failures. But like any other failure, we just dust off and fix the problem and move forward. Some of the highlights for this year, I just thought I'd point out to you. Our officers, our members were involved in volunteering for Independence Day parade, Eagle Fest, Fall Fest, Christmas Parade, Tree Line, Shop with the Cop, Toy Co. Garage, Drug Take Back. I would like to point out, they put in a couple of days, and quite a few of them did it on their own time in that heat with the fire hydrant issue over at Middle School. And that's something that even the full-time guys wouldn't want to do it. These guys came in on their own too to do so. And even as much as weekend, I believe seven of them, if I remember correctly, headed out to Indian Mountain just to volunteer Dover services to help out people that needed help. A few other highlights for the year. Detective South closed out the homicide on Cedar Street, obtained three indictments. Officer solved the ongoing vandalism problem at City Park. I'd like to mention that Officer Ricky Smith had got one heck of a large quantity of meth, and I don't remember the exact weight of it, but it was very significant. Eli Thomas has taken over coordination scheduling for training for the Reserve Unit this year. He's doing an excellent job. Point out that collectively, and this is a low estimate, all of our members have achieved collectively over 3,000 hours of training this year. It had been a variety of areas from leadership schools to alert active shooters, investigations. Now, Mr. Burda's completed a lot of different computer-related courses, surveillance courses, ransomware courses, been working very hard to kind of secure our network here. Each one of the members has been bringing in a lot of their own personal knowledge and skills, really putting together a good team. We have had thus far through the end of November for this town, 310 arrests in 2023. Of that, 35 are drugs and 27 are felonies. They had 248 misdemeanor arrests. And they've conducted a total at the end of November of 1,814 traffic stops. So I do support them in this. We do occasionally get calls saying, why are we not slowing people down at 79? I tell them they're out there doing it. Pushing 2,000 traffic stops, just trying to keep this under control a little bit. We did have a spike here a couple of months ago, and I'm not sure what caused it. A lot of people may say it's minor. In some ways, yes, but no, it's not because every one of these vehicles is potentially a 2,000-plus-pound deadly weapon. But people call in saying, what's going on? Why is everybody just speeding all of a sudden? And I don't have an answer for it, but they've been out there working on keeping that traffic under control as well. I'll be careful. I don't want to step on Jonathan's toes here because I know he's got a little report to give. But I do want to point out that we've also completed the SCFR Auto Mutual Aid Agreement, which is going to be very beneficial to both the county and to the city. And I believe it's going to have an impact on our ISO rating. And there again, I'm not going to delve into this because I don't want to take away from what he's going to report, but very optimistic about ISO next spring. Some of the goals, at least on the law enforcement side for '24, we're kind of revamping the training for any new PSOs coming onboard. Whereas beforehand, like anything else, when we start out new, you learn as you go. What works, what doesn't. Been sitting with Eli, Jonathan, got a new structure. And we're basically going to run a one-year new course for everybody. It's going to be improvised between rescue, fire, and law enforcement. And it's going to be basically an evolution every month. Multiple reasons. One, to keep the interest up because what it's done is no sense to get tedious and boring. But also so we can get to the end of the year and have over 300 hours on year one and feel comfortable sending these people out there versus what the state requires, which is very minimal. The Reserve Commission in Tennessee, it requires pretty much 8 hours. And I believe it's between 30 and 40 for fire. We want to go way beyond that. So again, that's always been the goal, to have our side tighter than what the state says because we got to be able to defend this too. Looking at a more advanced training for rescue this year, especially the last three, four months, have been, I don't want to say unprecedented, but kind of surprising the amount of motor vehicle accidents we've been responding to both here and in the county. And that is one thing, you know, that when we have a deficiency collectively in Stewart County is the business hours, the Monday to Friday calls for service. And this is, it's just a problem we all have. It's no its fault. But I don't recall how many times we've had motor vehicle accidents where tones come out once, twice, three times, and we're lucky if we can scrape up one or two people in certain cases. We're very fortunate because we do have, for our size and good cadre, people generally available during the day. But there it goes back to the mutual auto aid, which is something we needed to work on because if we've got two or three, they haven't had one or two, or whatever the numbers are, we need to just start running to each other. Charles and I have talked about this before too. Who cares who's coming, as long as somebody's coming to get the job done. And when it's your loved one trapped in a vehicle, it can be pretty scary and very dangerous. That's one of the big things we want to get going. And so of course, we're going to try to push more rescue training amongst both fire and police, really. So everybody that gets out there needs to know how to work those tools. Working on some new grants. Obviously, we're going to review things that didn't go right this year and try to correct those. But overall, I'd say it's been a positive year. We're going to complete the primary assignments, which is something that I put together earlier this year. And it does include the pre-plans that are being done for fire. But what we're looking at is the schools, GH Armor, National Wire, Dover Care Center, the bigger places that are usually full of people. And we're putting together kind of a collective total assessment, not only the fire, tactical response, and the most unfortunate shooting incidents of that nature. And Alex is going to follow through and do an assessment on their IT security form too. And it's really more of a service. It's nothing that we're going to say you have to do these changes, but we're going to make recommendations to these. So A, it benefits them, or B, it benefits all of us responding to any type of emergency. One of the things that's been a concern to me is we train and we prepare for what if, what if, what if, but we never prepare for what do you do afterwards? What if we have mass casualties? How do we transport them? Who's going to coordinate? The lines of dispatch are going to be clogged out. So these are things we want to get a little before the incident, well after the incident, in place. Excuse me. Review, going to do a review on our policy. We're going to have some changes made. And the meeting was represented this from Clea this year to see if it's even a reasonable possibility to get accredited here in the '24, '25 year. It's, I'm not sure what the right word to look for is. I think it really lends a lot of credit to us as a department if we can achieve that. There's a lot of requirements for it. Takes a lot of time to do, but I'm hoping we can at least get to start on that as well. Working with Alex to kind of create a, I guess we'll call it a crime trends program. Do I have that right? Where he's going to start putting in data from in the city. And though we don't have major, major criminal elements here, anything like that, but it's, we're looking at it from a couple of different standpoints. What are their hot hours, our hot spots? Where to reallocate a little bit better for our services, where we're needed the most. We've got to schedule accordingly. And of course.
That's going along with traffic proportions.
Correct. I probably should be careful using the term crime trends. I would say probably needs for services would be a better way of putting this. That just concludes any kind of criminal activity. And of course, we've had several people that have come to me and brought this up, and I brought it up to them. I'm glad to see some interested in it. Putting together a voluntary physical fitness program too. We're not going to make that a mandatory, but I do encourage it. And I think it'd be a great thing to have here. It may potentially reduce insurance costs, but more importantly, help everybody get a little more motivated to their physical fitness. That's pretty much what I have for you tonight.
One question, Chief. I've noticed several, we get told out for a fire and several officers would respond within minutes or seconds. Do we have those numbers of the times that that happened that our law enforcement that were working that took care of the fire before you and the fire agencies or the fire trucks yet they got there?
I don't have the total numbers this evening. I can tell you just recently, in the last three, four weeks, we've had several of those incidents. I was involved in one of them. And you're talking two, three minutes, probably the average. But that's something at the end of the year, at the end of December, I'll put together all those numbers for the council review as well.
I mean, that's a good, you might be, that's a great resource for our public safety department, for our officers that are working, that they can get there and have, I guess, a fire signature or something in their vehicle that they can get control of that fire before we get anything else out there. So I'm very impressed with that.
Well, and I believe Jonathan's here with a little of that. And I'm trying not to take too much out of his because it's just kind of rude. We had one, a few weeks ago, I believe, three weeks ago on Saturday. I was covering a shift and I had Reserve with me. We got a call. It wasn't a major incident. It was a major accident, I believe, or incident, but it was for Pila. Work's perfect. Coming right by here, dump him. He grabs a truck. We got two people and two apparatus out there. So the concept is working. It's working well. It is reducing times for pretty much any emergency. Yes, what you were talking about, I believe he's going to address that too with you.
Okay.
Any questions?
Thank you, Chief.
Okay. Now we have our fire captain, Department of the Board.
You'll hear a lot of things kind of repeated by me, Chief. First off, many here change. I want to first thank the town of Dover, Charles, Chief, just for the opportunity to be in the position I am. Been volunteering since I was 16, so I'll be at 17 years this year. Serving Miss Jane on the old Dover Fire Department, so it's really good. It's come full circle and I'm able to be, you know, here as a full-time job. So we've had over 100 calls for service this year. That's dispatch and I-1-1 calls. That broke just this past month, and we still got the rest of the month. When me and Miss Jane were on the fire department, I think Chief Sheets told us we're averaging about 50 for the year, so now we're at over 100. So it's been over the last 10 years. And I only expect with the growth of the city that it'll go up. And that's not counting direct call-ins, calls that we've just stumbled upon. So, but dispatch and I-1-1 calls were at over 100. Those includes fires, motor vehicle accidents, fire alarms, weather-related calls, and mutual aid that we go out to the county. We've had over, when Chief touched on ISO, we've had over 110 buildings pre-planned. And that started in November. I started October 23rd, and I started that November 1st. I do want to give a huge shout out to the police side. Those guys that were on duty during the daytime hours, they helped me. They did the bulk of the work for me. And that was all officers. I want to give a shout out to them for helping with the pre-plans and not go unnoticed. Our volunteers, this is the volunteer side of things, they average 40-plus duty station hours a month. This does not include their trainings. It doesn't include responses to calls. That's them taking time out of their days, out of their weekends to be at the station doing something. That's including vehicle maintenance, station duties, just getting together and being out and doing everything and stuff like that. So it's 40-plus hours. They do participate in county events as Chief, as Chief mentioned. They're huge at Eagle Fest. They're huge on the Christmas Parade. Those are our two biggest ones. I'm going to drop down just a little bit. Alex led a little group of guys, two or three of them, they restored, they started the restoration project on Engine One, Old Engine One. So that was a big thing. We had that for the parade. We have 40, the state requires us to have 40 hours of in-service training. The guys went, the guys and Monica went way above that, as Chief said. On the fireside alone, it's in the hundreds of hours. And that includes online trainings. That includes technical rescue trainings that some of our members have been to, local area training, stuff like that. Another thing that hits on that is, like you said, we did formalize a mutually agreed with SCFR. They have now opened the door for us. We've been invited to three or four different trainings with them that they hosted. And that's going to be, that's going to be reciprocated by us in 2024. So we're going to have an open-door policy. Training together will help us work together. So I have gotten no short of 10 to 20 texts over the last month on our guys going out and assisting them with mutual aid calls, fire, the weather-related incidents, saying how good our guys operated, how professional they were, and they were hand-in-hand with the SCFR guys. So I'm really proud of them on that. I was looking on that yesterday, Saturday. I was in Mayfield, Kentucky with my son's basketball. We were going all day. And I was a little just anxious. We knew, me and Alex had talked about the potential of severe weather coming in. When I started hearing about the tornadoes dropping, I really kind of freaked out. But I kept in contact with the UFC. We had seven guys, seven volunteers, out in Indian Mountain helping out, two engines and seven guys. So we, I'm very proud of them for taking the time out to go out to my community, to allow them in Indian Mountain, and assist them with that. So I wanted to give them a shout out. Chief did have an ISO meeting. Me, Chief, and Charles did meet with an ISO webinar. The city right now falls under the county's ISO rating. So we are a recognized fire department. We have an ISO scheduled starting up in springtime summer of next year. We've been keeping up on our hose testing, our hybrid testing, our engine pump testing. So we'll call him, get them by the month notice, and then we'll get an inspection. That's slated to be around spring or summertime. That's when heat can get us in. So we are looking to lower our ISO rating. Right now, I think we're at a six because of the county. We're looking to drop that. So it's totally doable. A totally doable objective, should I say. Public safety concept is working, as Chief said. He had an incident the other day. About a month ago, Jody and Carl were out. I had just got home from work. Fire call came out, mom wore a fire on a chain lead and was spreading in the woods, potentially going to be a large crash fire. Jody and Carl got there within two minutes, two, three minutes, put the bulk of the fire out with their fire extinguishers and a rake. By the time I got there, me and Jimmy just pretty much went to the area down and caught it good. They'd done most of the work. That's not the first time that's happened. That's multiple times. Like Chief said, we can get you some numbers, but that happens far more. Wreck over here on front of Mama Miss, Carl was first on there, gave a good size up. And we were there within a few minutes. So that concept is working. It's also working with the, not just the police, but the city workers. I think Jeff averages more calls than probably anybody, you know, right now anyway because he's there, you know? So he's been to many, many fire alarms and stuff like that, wrecks and stuff like that. So the goal, like Chief said, is to get the bulk, if not all the city employees, whether it be police, fire, that are participating in the public safety office, extrication training. That's got to happen. So that'll be on top of the fire training. We got two, we had repairs done on two of our engines. One was had to be taken out, unfortunately, the Caffees. But the other one was done in-house. So that's another thumbs up to our volunteers. And we, like I said earlier, we started the restoration project on Engine One. Alex and him have a lot of big plans for that. So hopefully we can get that completely restored and on display somewhere. 2024 goals for our department, and this is just a few of them. Right now, currently, we have applications out, and I'm in contact with people. I can discuss more at a later date, but we have applications for grants to assist with turnout, gears, radios, and extrication flipping. So that's right now. We're doing ISO prep to lower our rating. Already said that. All members trained on vehicle extrication. One thing we have done is we've been doing a weekend coverage shift. We've been toying with that idea. We've been looking at the metrics on when we're called out the most right now. And Jeff can kind of even, because me and Jeff have left church before. Sunday morning's kind of big on when we'll get a call. Me and Jeff have left church a handful of times, if that, to go out. So we've started a kind of a, just a study on that. We've been staffing the weekends. So Sunday mornings are staffed. Saturdays are becoming staffed as well, but staffed by volunteers. So we are getting weekend coverage as well. One big thing we're going to hit on is recruitment. Again, I've talked with Alex and Chief about that. We're working on getting some recruitment campaigns going, bringing some more people. I do want to advance our current firefighters to the next level. The bulk of them have the basics, but I do want to get them nationally accredited, either through ISAC or ProBor. That way, if they ever did move somewhere else or did lose them, they already have all the training under the belt. Plus, it's better protection for the city, it's more advanced training. And the last thing I want to really focus on is increasing community risk reduction and fire prevention efforts. I think we do a good job around the community, around the schools. And, you know, prevention kind of puts the fire department out of business, but I'd rather prevent a fire than fight a fire. So that'll be our big thing next year, as well as doing more community risk reduction and fire prevention goals. So you guys have any questions from the meeting?
I got two. One, what would be the benefit of decreasing our S O R I S O rating?
Lower insurance premiums for those. And, you know, it's, I don't want to say it's a bragline, but that's how fire departments are judged. There's only, you know, there's only certain class ones. The lowest you can get, the best you can get is class one. And it goes up to 10, I believe. And, you know, it's kind of a badge of honor of the fire department, but it also lowers homeowners' premiums on their insurance. So.
Second question, any for the following year coming up, anything about tornadoes?
That'd be something I believe we'd have to talk with the EMA director. But, I mean, that would be something we'd have to discuss, you know, internally or within, you know? But I mean, I don't know. I haven't really researched, to be honest with you, on that. However, I do see the need for it because, you know, we talked about Clarksville. They didn't have really a lot of, you know, warning for them. So I just don't know the, you know, the logistics or the finances on it. There probably are grants out there for them that I would have to get within a later date.
Something we can look at to see what we move forward next year with.
I'd like to say, Jonathan, and to the Chief also, that I really appreciate all the updates. And I would like to echo how the reserves plus our employees work and how hard they work at these events. Our Eagle Fest is a big event, but as we had our parade last week, that is not even the town of Dover. It is the Chamber. And they all fell in and worked just so hard to make the parade safe for everybody. So not just our events, it's other events, such as the Chamber event, that really impressed me. Just to want to clear how, it's not just the Dover events. It's, you know, how hard you guys and ladies worked for the Chamber of Commerce.
And, you know, with mutual agreement, I mean, the county event, if you're part of it too. So, I mean, we're here to serve the citizens, both Dover and the county and surrounding counties.
Because I know a lot of people think it is the town of Dover event. But, you know, the town of Dover's just always, y'all have really stepped up and always have. And that's great because it's teamwork. But just to know how hard y'all work for the Chamber, as well as for the town of Dover Eagle Fest. So I wanted to really thank you all for that very much.
Captain, also on the smoke alarms that you've been going around handing out, do you have a count on that yet?
We've given out five so far. We ran out. So when I talked to the State Fire Marshal's Office, I had to take a smoke detector installer course and a little one-hour class online. But we can order them as you go. We fill out a sheet. They can refute, they really want the fire department in there installing it. The ones I did now, they wanted to do it themselves. So you have, there's a spot on the sheet that she can do that. However, they just want us to do it. They just track the metrics on that too. Especially if there's a call there, to see if there's a spot on our need for reporting that our fire reports that was the smoke detector found, was it alerting a residence, and did it help get them out? So we've got more on order for those, but we've given out five since I've been here in October.
Out of number eight, approved requests by the owners to annex. It's in your packet, and it's a request to annex a portion of the property located at $15.96 on Broadway.
This is the David Wallace property that was purchased. The owners are requesting for it to come into the city for development. This is not a vote tonight to approve the annexation. This is an approval just to proceed with the annexation. Still got to go planning, still got to go back to council. So there's several steps we've got to do to get it done. But they're asking for y'all's approval to move forward. And to be on record, this is a piece of property Dr. Barrett Rempro owns, Charles Parks Jr. owns, and Billy Parks owns. It has nothing to do with my part of the development. I have nothing to do with it. But I just want to be brought to the record what it is.
It's a process of letting them have, but it's to bring it, if I'm correct, it's to bring it so that the planning committee, it will be brought before the planning committee to decide. Yes.
They have some people looking to come into the area. Of course, it's got to be for city sewer and stuff like that, but it won't be in the city. The developers do. So this is just another tract of land that would add to the city for development.
Any questions or comments? Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Motion, Mr. Timmons. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Burda. We'll have a roll call. Mr. Story?
Yes.
Ms. Burkhardt?
Yes.
Mr. Timmons?
Yes.
Mr. Burda?
Yes.
I'll say it. Okay. We can move forward with that. Number nine is approved resolution 671-23 to adopt the Tennessee Department of Transportation procurement policy for flat grant paving project.
Yes. This is the money that we have been awarded for the flat grant, it's $500,000 in a match. But to move forward with it, T-Dot is wanting us to use their procurement policy to get our engineers, which has to be on an approved list, to oversee this federal dollars. So that's basically what we're asking for here. So we'll follow their guidelines.
Any comments, questions? Motion to approve. Motion, Mr. Burkhardt. Have a second.
Second.
Second, Mr. Timmons. Let's have a roll call. Mr. Story?
Yes.
Ms. Burkhardt?
Yes.
Mr. Timmons?
Yes.
Mr. Burda?
Yes.
And myself. Okay. Out of number 10 is the communications from the mayor.
Not really anything other than just to say that I want to thank everyone for a wonderful year. We've got dedicated employees and how blessed we are to have them. Kind of echo what we said a while ago about with all the different, the public safety. I feel that way about our whole team. I think we're just truly blessed to have the dedication and the team that we've got. Olivia, we thank you. You do an awesome job. Charles, everybody. I mean, it's not enough time to name everybody, but we're just very blessed to have everybody for the town of Dover. So that's all I have.
Out of number 11, old business.
Just a quick update, you know, our building money, our park money, all this money that's been approved, waiting on contracts for the state. Talked to the USDA today about the bond resolutions. We're probably looking at two more months before we get them in. So once we get all that, all the money is sitting there, we can start some work so everybody can see that we're actually doing that.
Getting pickleball courts, so we can actually see that. That's what I've been hearing the most of, is pickleball.
Out of number 12, new business. Out of number 13 is communication for Charles.
All right. Like to echo, first I want to say to the mayor and Alderman, thank y'all for your support this year. Feel like we're moving in a good direction on a lot of different projects that we've been needing to get fixed for a while. I want to say thank you to our chief, our captain, all the employees for a great job they've done this year. And to Ms. Olivia for legal. Hopefully we can continue to move forward in a positive direction and wish Hopefully we can continue to move forward in a positive direction and wish y'all a Merry Christmas and happy new year's.
Out of number 14, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Motion. But Mr. Story, you said it's alone. Do I have a second? Second, Mr. Burda, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Return.